Bless you.
What's your question?
I think we're all here. I think Peter's going to join us in a little bit. Matt, are we ready to start?
Yes.
Okay. Welcome, welcome to this public meeting of the Princeton Board of Education. The Board is an elected unpaid group of ten citizens who set policy and make decisions on educational, financial, and personnel matters for the Princeton Public Schools on behalf of all residents. We are always pleased when members of the community attend our meetings. The Board and the school district operate under applicable New Jersey laws and under regulations of the New Jersey State Board of Education. Each meeting includes an opportunity for those attending to comment on items on the published agenda or other matters of interest to them. The Board reserves the right to limit time allotted to public participation. Law limits discussion of individual personnel and confidential matters. We desire that our meetings provide useful opportunities for communication between the Board and the community. So thank you for attending.
As required under the Open Public Meeting Act NJSA 1046 as sequentia, adequate notice was given for calling this meeting. It was authorized by the Board of Education and forwarded to the municipal clerk Princeton Packet and the Times on January 6, 2021, and distributed to the schools and others on the standard distribution list. The Board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. Board policy 20230 recording devices requires that we inform those attending this virtual Zoom meeting that the proceedings are being recorded. This meeting is not being live streamed. Public members who wish to make comment at the appropriate time, as noted in the agenda or added by the presiding officer, shall raise their hand virtually at the bottom of the Zoom screen. Once called upon, the member of the public will be requested to unmute themselves by clicking the mute button at the bottom of the Zoom screen. The representatives of the representative of the sending district is authorized to vote on such matters that affect sending district students or affect the governance of the Princeton Public Schools. As more specifically designated in NJSA 18A 388.1, in the event this statute is amended, the law shall take precedence again over this by law. Sending district votes pertaining to personnel actions refer to high school, central administrative, and district-wide staff only. Votes otherwise are considered abstentions. Would you like me to take a roll call?
You please take the roll. Thank you.
Beth Baron.
Here.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Here.
Dan Dart.
Here.
Betsy Baglio.
Here.
Ryan McDonald.
Present.
Michelle Tuck Ponder.
Present.
Peter Katz. Daphne Kendall.
Here.
Susan Cantor.
Yeah.
Jean Durbin.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The first order of business is item D1 on the agenda, the adoption of the minutes for August 24, 2021. Could I have a motion, please? Brian, second. Jean, any discussion?
May I ask a question of our Board Secretary? Matt, I was present for public but not for closed in August. So are these open minutes? How do I vote is my question?
So you want to call the roll for a vote for those minutes, please?
Beth Baron.
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Yes.
Dan Dart.
Yes.
Betsy Baglio.
Yes.
Ryan McDonald.
Yes.
Shell Tuck Ponder.
Yes.
Daphne Kendall. Daphne Kendall.
Yes. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Susan Cantor.
Yes.
Jean Durbin.
Yes.
Motion.
Thank you. That brings us to our student board members' report. Our two student board members, we welcome them for their first report of the year. It's Ned Erickson and Chris Shen. So we'd like to glad to hear from you. Welcome.
Thank you. We have some words prepared. So good evening, everyone. It's really great to be here and we'd like to thank the Board for having us again. We wanted to take tonight to both give an update on life at PHS as well as address some larger topics. So first and foremost, these first few weeks of school have been going really well. It's just great to be back in person for school and also interacting with your peers and our teachers. That's something that I personally missed a lot last year. From the conversations that we've had with our peers, most students have adjusted back to in-person learning fairly smoothly. And our teachers have just been absolutely phenomenal in facilitating this transition. So we really thank them for that. The welcome back event at the high school, which was created by Mr. Schmuel, was also a major success. It happened earlier this month in September. I was there as a peer group leader. And over my last three years here at PHS, this is probably like one of the first times that I've ever seen so many kids excited to come to school on a Friday night and just have fun. We're really excited to build off of this momentum and have a great year. And there are also two larger topics that Ned and I wanted to address tonight. So first of which is COVID protocols. So students are really excited to come back. But something both of us have noticed over the course of the last few weeks is that beyond mask wearing, there isn't much enforcement of COVID protocols here at the high school. Things like social distancing don't really happen very often during times like when kids are passing between classes in packed halls or eating lunch. And in addition, we've been talking to students and a lot of students are worried about transparency when it comes to close contact notifications. Some students have told us that they didn't even know that students in their classes or who sat close to them had COVID until others mentioned it to them. And because they didn't, because they didn't know, first of all, they were scared because from their perspective, they found out just through word of mouth and not from the district or the school, which has created a lot of uncertainty. And also because they didn't know, they weren't able to quarantine or know to get tested. In addition, students don't receive those close contact emails their parents do. So again, they weren't really sure what was going on unless their parent checked a work email or personal email after in the evening. So this has led to a lot of concern amongst the student body. And we strongly urge that the district reexamine these policies and how they can better communicate with the student body.
One of our other big focuses this year is going to be student stress. This is something I'm sure the Board is very familiar with. But after going through online school, student stress isn't the same as it's always been. Over the past one and a half years, we've tried a lot of different teaching models, some of which help students a lot, others of which were not so helpful. And we think that having this experience makes it the perfect time to reexamine the issue. PHS is known for its academic excellence and for producing passionate and mature students. But this excellence can often affect students negatively. And we've found that a lot of students are afraid to share their stress for fears that it may make them feel weak or inadequate. And we don't have any answers for you at this board meeting. But Chris and I this year plan on surveying the student body as well as examining, or sorry, as well as creating a group of students who can help us examine the issue and conducting interviews with both students and teachers. Our goal for this year is to create a list of specific and actionable items for the Board to discuss. And we hope to get back to you on that as soon as possible. And I just wanted to echo what Chris said and give a special shout out to our teachers and administrators at PHS for working so hard to give us the best possible back-to-school experience.
Thank you, Ned and Chris, for your first report. We really appreciate hearing from you. Does anyone have any questions for them? If not, we will continue on. That brings us to my comments, the President's comments. I really want to welcome everyone here tonight. And I want to acknowledge that we are in the beginning of a year that's that's complex in a way that no one, no one actually anticipated. We're still in the middle of a pandemic. And I really want to give a shout out to the people who've been behind the scenes making this, making it possible for our bringing our kids back into the building and having the type of experiences that Ned and Chris just talked about, getting everyone back into a semblance of normalcy. And that includes our bus drivers, our food service workers, our custodial staff. There's administrators who have left Valley Road to go actually into the kitchens and help prep food and help transport the transport team. There's our crossing guards. And I would note that we are like everywhere else in the country, having a real labor shortage. So if you have any interest in helping with being a crossing guard, for example, that's run by the police department at $30 an hour, we are sorely in need of that. And that is again, run by the municipality, but obviously it benefits our children in our schools. We need crossing guards. We need volunteers in the schools on a regular basis to help with lunches and recess and other things. And if you're interested in these things, you can contact the Human Resources Department and they can work with you to get fingerprinted and background checked, which is necessary if you're going to be around our children, but it's very much needed. So I'm, you know, just want to put that out there to the community again. We also need substitute teachers. We have a virtual back-to-school nights coming this week. Tomorrow is PMS and Thursday is PHS. And there's a meeting greet with Dr. Kelly next week, Tuesday at Valley Road from 6 to 7. And I also want to just acknowledge all of, to all of us, this is our first meeting since school started or, you know, and we want to say that, you know, we're glad that everyone's back. We're so grateful. We still have the children in the buildings. We all know every day we're watching for COVID and hoping we can keep them there. It hasn't been, it's been smooth in many cases. In some cases, it hasn't been smooth. And where the start of the year hasn't been smooth, we just, I know that our Board feels very strongly that we trust and support our leaders. And we, we ask for a bit of grace from our parents and from, from those who are experiencing some difficulties because we're all in this together and we're trying to support the children. And so I just wanted to say that we acknowledge that there hasn't been, you know, some people have had confusion or frustration or things haven't gone in the way that they wanted or they needed more information. But we're all doing our best and we're all in this together. And we do support our administrators and our, and our teachers and our staff and our superintendent. And we're grateful we have them working with us at this time where they're all working literally 24/7. And we know they're exhausted and we appreciate that they are giving it their all and their passion for our children. So I really wanted to say that, just to start this meeting that way. Now I would like to, oh, one other thing to tell you about is that our next meeting is October 12th and there's a PHS homecoming on October 15th, which is really exciting because we haven't done anything like this in so long. And the studio band will play, be playing. We can celebrate our athletes and watch the game. And I'm sure our cheer team will be there. So that's something for us all to get excited about. And with that, I'd like to move on to our gratitude. And Ms. Cantor, Susan Cantor, would you like to lead that, please?
I would. I am truly honored to be able to talk about gratitude today. Dr. Ginsburg will be, had submitted an item for us to consider on the agenda later. And that is his impending retirement. So I would like, I'm honored to be the first to express our profound gratitude to Dr. Ginsburg for over his five decades of service to education and over 30 years of that service to the Princeton Public Schools. As a principal of both the Littlebrook School and Johnson Park School, he strived continuously to improve the experiences of our students. He created a sense of family and showed, always tried to show respect to both the students and the parents. His dedication to his job is legendary. His letters that would show up to kids, kids and families long after they had left his schools, acknowledging their accomplishments, both big and small, made everyone feel that he was always cheering for them. The Board and the community would finally like to thank Dr. Ginsburg for stepping up, stepping back into central administration to help us through the pandemic with his unwavering energy and focus. Dr. G was the first person I met in this district 18 years ago. And I am glad he is giving our district three months to express our gratitude as we will need every minute.
Thank you, Susan. Dr. Ginsburg, this is the first in a long line of, I'm sure will be many, many gratitude and departure celebrations for you. Daphna?
So as is Princeton tradition, when someone announces their retirement is when, you know, we give them accolades and then they get this cold shoulder for the rest of the time. So here we go, Bob. It's bittersweet to learn of your retirement. I've gotten to know you over the past several years. And the one thing that's very clear is that you are loved across the district by staff, parents, and most importantly, students. You have provided advice and counsel to countless staff and you have been a resource for many families. And your generosity, many know, has extended well beyond your time. Has extended well beyond only time. Bob in short is a mensch. His contributions to the district relating to equity and achievement will be long-lasting. Bob, we wish you all the best and a long and healthy retirement.
Thank you. Dan?
I want to personally thank Bob Ginsburg. We had two daughters go through Johnson Park with a warm, nurturing, and inspiring experience. And so we are forever grateful. Our family lived within the two-mile limit, so we were driving our children to school. And Bob was such a visible presence, a drop-off and particularly a pickup. And I knew that if there was any issue that I had about any of our children or anything going on in that area, Bob would be readily available and welcoming without an appointment. So he's contributed greatly and I've been delighted to work with him very closely as the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction. And he's contributed so much to the success of Princeton Public Schools. Thank you, Bob.
Betsy?
And I'll just jump in and say, Bob, we, we very much appreciate all you've done for students in this district. And I'm going to share a quick anecdote, I think I've said before, which is Bob attends middle school shows back before COVID, right, when shows were in person. And he attends middle school shows to cheer for his students that he had at Johnson Park. As Susan said, he, they stay with him and Dan said the same thing. Well, my son, who went to Community Park, received a letter in the mail from Dr. Ginsburg just because he knew me. And he said what a great job he did and how proud his parents are. And I just want to say, Bob, those extra, the extra mile that you go to for students in this entire district makes them know that they're loved and that adults are there cheering for them, quite literally in the audience of all parts of their life. So thank you very much for all of that you've done.
Debbie?
Bob, we will miss you. What amazes me about you is your memory. You remember every person's name, every child's name. You remember back to all the things the district has done and to make sure we don't do it again the wrong way. And I appreciate all that history that you bring. And I know the students at JP because, I mean, I've been going to the PTO meetings there. And I know how much they all love you and the families and you will truly be missed. But you have left an unbelievable legacy of students, you know, to carry on what you have given to them. So thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Big round for Bob. Thank you, Bob. Just get ready. We're going to get, give this to you all the time now. Whenever you turn around and people will be saying nice things to you, unless it's Daphna, she says we're done, right, cold shoulder. All right. So the next thing up is the referendum update. Mr. Bolden?
Superintendent's comments are first.
Well, I am sorry. Excuse me. Dr. Kelly, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I thought from the flow of it, and I do have comments. I shared my presentation with Mr. Bolden. Thank you. Matt, it's in two parts, but you can go like in between. So good evening, everyone. I can't believe that we are already at the end of September. So I'd like to share my superintendent's reports or my comments. And as on everyone's mind, if you could go to the next slide, please, is an update on what the district is doing around COVID-19 planning. So first, I'm going to start with Crisis Go. Princeton Public Schools Transition to Crisis Go, which is a mobile app or an online tool that allows school administrators, teachers, and school staff to verify completion of our daily symptom screening. As you know, this year, our goal is to keep our schools open full day, five days a week from now until June. That's our goal. Jeff Grosser, Princeton Health Department Representative, has asked myself and the team to stress the importance to the public to please complete the daily screening every day. That, along with wearing our mask, being vaccinated if you're eligible, are some of the top strategies that will help all of our schools and the community attain the goal of keeping our students and our staff safe. We've been tweaking, if you can go back to the slide, please, Matt, thank you. We've been tweaking the times for completion for your screener based on feedback from our families via PTO Council. As of last week, the deadline is now 7:50 a.m. to complete your daily screener. Prior to entering any school, school or district offices, this will enable our schools to print out the names of students who haven't yet completed their screening so that the administrator or those in the front office can give a quick reminder follow-up call, allowing those students to enter the classrooms and begin their school day. All right, you can go to the next slide. In terms of the COVID-19 decision protocol, we shared recently with PTO Council the protocol or a decision tree, which in consultation with the Princeton Health Department, helps our schools determine who is a close contact. Those close contacts would require, if students are identified of being a close contact, they will be required to quarantine depending upon their vaccination status. To learn what the transmission level for the community, I would like to encourage all of those who are watching to please sign up for the email alerts directly from the Princeton Health Department. However, with those transmission levels, please know that the number of days for students to quarantine is depending upon whether or not the community's transmission rates is in the high level. Right now, we're still in a moderate or moderate to high. And our number of days for students who are considered close contact, contact rather, would be seven days to be in quarantine. And for those students that we are requiring to quarantine, they are going to be eligible to participate in remote learning within two days of being identified as a close contact, close contact. I can't talk this evening. And again, close contacts right now, according to the Princeton Health Department, would be any student who has a cumulative been within six feet of 15 minutes are considered a close contact. Previously, at the start of the school year, it was three feet. But now, based on the transmission levels, we are considering students who have not been vaccinated, a close contact, and they would be required to quarantine. Next slide. In terms of lockers and lunch, we are using these as mitigation strategies. Again, our number one goal is the health and safety of our students and staff. We also want to keep our schools open five days a week, four days for all of our students. So with that in mind, we have placed several restrictions on the use of areas in our school buildings, including the lockers at our middle school. Again, the reason for this is to reduce the likelihood of transmission of COVID, but also to reduce the need to quarantine large groups of students. Remembering again, that not all of our students at the middle school are eligible for the vaccine as of yet. We do understand that this is an inconvenience for our students and families because they will be required to carry all of their materials throughout the day. However, the physical layouts of the lockers in the middle schools, along with students, the way that we define close contact, makes it necessary for us to keep this restriction in place. Also, prior to the beginning of the school year, our plan was to encourage our classes to eat outdoors, especially at the elementary level, while the weather was still warm. We've made several tweaks in our processes and finally had to pull the trigger with our provider Nutriserve to move our lunches to serve only, with lunch selections now being more of a grab and go with limited options. These selections will be further limited to items that are easy to eat for students so that they can carry it from the lunchroom to the outdoor eating areas. Next slide. I also want to talk about this evening's upcoming student and staff screening for COVID-19. As a preventative measure, we have been, we are planning to partner with Medicaat to provide twice a week PCR screening testing to any staff member who is unvaccinated beginning the week of October 5th. Currently, all of our staff have been updating documentation of their vaccination status via a secure portal. That documentation is being vetted so that we can establish the testing schedules for eligible staff. Registration for unvaccinated staff began last week. In terms of our students, we're partnering with the Department of Health to opt into the state's school screening testing program for students who are unvaccinated. The Department of Health has provided the district with written receipt of our opt-in request and additional details are forthcoming. And I'm going to go to the next slide. And I'm going to turn the floor back over to Matt, take a break. And Matt, if you wouldn't mind providing just a quick update on HEPA filters.
Sure. So we're researching internally and external, through external resources as well. We've pretty much fully made the decision along with central administration to get large HEPA machines in all the cafeteriums around the district and some other areas that are not as well ventilated. But we think that especially as we head into the fall and winter, that those areas are really going to benefit from some HEPA machines. We've been in contact with university and their facility staff, asking them a lot of questions, finding out what they've used in their equipment. So we should be placing those orders very, very shortly.
Before we go on to the update on the referendum, are there any questions? Daphna?
Hi. Thank you, Dr. Kelly, Matt, for that presentation. Appreciate it. I've been asked, once we kept, once by October 18th, we captured the information about what teachers are vaccinated, is that, will that become public?
No, that is, it's uploaded. I actually uploaded. My documentation is uploaded to a private portal.
Okay, thank you.
All right, seeing no other questions. I'll turn the floor back over to Matt.
Carol, there's, there's a question in the chat. Someone asking why we moved from three feet to six feet.
Oh, that's a really great question. Oh, that's a really great question. So the the definition of close contact, we moved from three feet to six feet under consultation with the Princeton Health Department based upon the transmission rates currently in the Princeton community. My understanding is that once those rates go down, we will move back to three feet. But the number of days for students that need to quarantine is still at seven days. You're welcome. And again, the HEPA filters are in the cafeteria areas. I'm just reading, I don't know, are we supposed to answer questions in the chat or just from board members?
I think if we see questions that it can easily be answered, I did no harm in doing that. Obviously, we can't answer always everything that's sent at us, but.
All right, so the HEPA filters, again, right now, we're looking in the cafeteria areas. And I also believe in the the, the, the small areas where students might need to take off their mask. And there was one other area that we were looking.
We're looking, we were just mentioning with areas where children were getting individual therapies, just speech or OTPT. And then we're also studying the high school classrooms.
Yeah, high school classrooms without the Airdales. All right. Okay, referendum update.
Great. So I'm going to give a short update on the 2018 referendum as we're hopefully winding down. Start off with the financial update, which you guys have seen on and off over the time period. Zoom can get a little funky here. Hold on, just move that up so everyone can see it. Currently, or going backwards, I should say, to refresh people's memories, there was a lot of pricing pressure on HVAC. And as we've learned since then, that we are not alone in that. There has been incredible inflationary pressure as well as a shortage of supply in the economy. A lot of it focused on HVAC. So currently, as we would stand right now, the referendum would be just over $884,000 over what was originally budgeted. But as you remember, back in the fiscal '21 budget, we did appropriate capital reserve, as is legally allowed, to help us to meet those shortfalls that were, that came from the HVAC pieces. I wanted to focus on some more positive things. As you've heard me say over and over again, I am a natural born optimist. That doesn't mean I'm not practical or logical or assertive. But so we'll look at some of the areas. Actually, that is the guidance area as you walk in to the guidance area. So that looks great. Hallway down the main guidance area. This is the new small little copy area and kitchen in the cafeteria. It's a nice flooring down here, new, all, all new. This is, so this is a movable partition that I'm pointing to here with my cursor. It's also, so we have two separate meeting rooms that we can make one large one or two separate. I understand they've been used a lot in the beginning of the school year. This is the new bathroom outside of guidance. Came in. Just yesterday, they just finished. So it's been a little slow. This floor that I'm pointing to down here is a really, really high quality epoxy floor. It took a little time to cure. There's apparently, and only a few vendors in the state, it's real sharp looking facility. So this is the retention basin that is behind the PAC Center going towards the middle school. So this was developed in order to help assist with flooding. Already got tested right off the bat on September 1st with that, those incredible storms that came through, dumping about nine inches of rain in our area. So the first test went really well, accumulated water here before it goes over through here and here over to the other retention basin that is on the other side of the PAC. If you're going away from the middle school or towards downtown, that is planted with some trees. It's almost like an arboretum. That, it helped to defray the water. The water goes into that retention basin, and then it goes out, takes a left over underneath Walnut through underneath Westminster Choir College and out to Creek. And I think it drains out to Carnegie Lake. So the first test went really well. There was some grading done here. We, oh, Jesus, I forgot. What happened? The picture, I had another picture here and somehow got deleted. But behind here going towards, behind here going towards the middle school, there's, there was some unevenness in the fields and the contractor took some of the excess dirt and leveled that out, making our athletic, athletic director, Brian Zabinski, very happy. So we need to seed this, which has to be done quickly because once you hit about mid-November, that grass is not going to grow. This is the almost completed grab and go. I can't remember if we're calling it grab and go or remote dynamic because everyone goes back and forth, but I like grab and go. So that's what I'm going to call it right now. So it's almost done. Nice flooring. We're going to have pizza warmers and coffee maker, some other equipment that's going to go here, back here on the back wall. The kids will flow through. There's actually two pictures, but you'll see this is kind of this part to the right. They'll flow through here and then walk out. So I have good circulation of students. Really excited about this. I know the high school staff is really excited. This is another piece of the referendum at the Littlebrook Library. Final equipment was just delivered. As you can see, outside of the referendum, these two Airdales were installed here. So be nicely conditioned. Library, the Littlebrook Library and the CP Library were added as a summer capital reserve project this year. So things are looking up. I just wanted to shout out for the Littlebrook Librarian who has been extremely helpful and understanding during this process, just a real positive attitude throughout the whole thing. We should be, and she's working very hard to get this library back in working order with, with a lot of help, but she's been great. This is some of the lighting, not the greatest picture, but real sharp, real sharp lighting. And then this is as you walk in, the librarian's desk. So, so we're real excited about this. Just one more picture. That's the up close of the new bookcases, some of the new bookcases. We were able to reuse some of the outer bookcases. Moving on to the restroom facility. Clearly not done yet, but this is the plumbing infrastructure in place. The walls are up. This is looking out through the concession window where during events, we will hopefully be, what am I trying to say? Not the, not the PTOs, the boosters and the center will be able to serve some healthy snacks. This is another corner of the wall. Not too exciting. This is, and I tried to get a nice shot. It, it, it looks sharper actually in real up close. This is the exterior of the split face. They call it split face block. That's going to make the exterior really, it looks pretty sharp. This picture doesn't do it full justice, I have to say. Most of it's going to be this split face block. There'll be some, what they're calling Hardy blank, Hardy plank in certain accents over near the bathroom. And I think around some of the concessionary, which is a very sturdy, like siding material. And then we're looking at the, what's to be the second floor going up from back here, which is covered, which is if you go through there is going to be a second floor. We're going to have, we're going to have some free form classrooms, flexible learning spaces, I should say, probably a better term, some more athletic space. So we're building out a second floor up here. As you can see, there's still quite a bit of work left to do. This goes into the fitness center, which is almost ready. The floor is being installed and we hope to have the fitness center online within the next two weeks. So as I was just talking about, this is the biggest and most challenging part of the high school renovation. The estimated substantial completion date is late February. We have a new construction manager and the general manager has a new project manager on site. Steel installation, as you can see, these posts have been up, as people know, for quite a while, that have been following the project. On the additional steel is starting to be installed today. So we are making progress. And I don't know if, if Carol, if you, did you have more of your presentation? Was that your presentation? But we can take.
Yeah, the next topic is the, are the, of the action plan.
Okay, but is there any questions right now about the, anything to do with the referendum? Nope, not seeing any. Okay. So you want me to pull back up yours, right?
So I am going to apologize in advance while he's pulling that up because I'd like to present to the board the 21, 22 district level action planning. So, and that is not to be confused with the superintendent's 100-day report, which is coming later this fall. But this evening, I'd like to present the district level action plan for the achievement of the district goals, which should be presented to the board each September, along with requesting that the board approve the district goals. If you can go back a slide, I guess, Matt, make sure I didn't miss anything. Okay, maybe not. So this, this evening, I'm going to be asking the board to acknowledge the approval of the district goals, which were originally approved with your strategic plan. And then second, I'm planning to present the action plan we've drafted to continue to build on the best of the district while acknowledging that there is work before us. But before I share the plan to achieve the district goals, I'd like to share first, the process used to develop the recommended actions. Therefore, I apologize in advance that this will be a little, I tried to like shorten it, but I felt it was really important that you know like what the process was. So the development of the action plan that I'm presenting to the board this evening truly began with listening. So one of my favorite authors and educators, Shane Saffir, discusses the principle of constructivist listening as a powerful tool to transform our classrooms and our schools where all students thrive and excel. Hopefully, you recall last spring, I sent out a survey to gain your feedback. I've also, when I arrived in July, conducted interviews with board members, with administrative team members, with student focus groups. In early August, several of our students attended National Equity Project's Youth Symposium. And I also met with those leaders in late August to listen to their demands for our districts. These stories and the stories of other stakeholders were an essential part of creating the action plan that are, is coming before you this evening. So here are some themes that I heard from those voices. Next slide. From the staff, I heard several themes, but the top themes were around communication and engagement. Definitely a feeling for more effective, open, honest communication. Second top issue was called, was culture, race, and DEI. Really calling for the school climate of having mutual respect, understanding, and support. Also heard from the staff, like a call for greater diversity across the district staff. And then a third consistent theme that emerged from the staff survey was around the areas of technology, safety, and facilities. Wanting to see the district strengthen the levels of excellence in those areas. From our families, the next slide. From the families, some of the consistent themes for sure, without a doubt, were around the concerns with returning back to school, the overarching theme of safety. But other desires expressed by families through those surveys were just ensuring again that we would continue to provide high-quality instruction, expressing the desire for their children to have access to rigorous courses, greater technology offerings with less emphasis on those experiences just being for certain students and wanting to see those experiences for all. So definitely a call for more inclusive, more equitable learning experiences. There was express interest by our families around seeing the diversity of our teaching staff as well as the, the district providing diversity and equity training for staff overall. And families express reassurance that the schools would have and use COVID-19 mitigation protocols to keep children safe upon their return to school. Along with that was just a general feeling of wanting to see facilities in excellent conditions. And then finally, they're seeking authentic engagement, asking for greater two-way communication opportunities, more so in partnership between the teachers, principals, and administrative staff. With the one-on-one interviews that I conducted when I entered in July, I call these empathy interviews. I focused those conversations on the topic of safe, healthy, and inclusive schools. But I also gave room for the respondents to share anything else that they felt compelled to tell me or that I should know about the district. Of those I interviewed, the majority felt that the most relevant question to address during the interview was, is the district inclusive of all students fostering positive development and interpersonal relationships? And that data tied to what we learned from our scholars who attended the youth symposium this summer. Next slide. From the youth symposium, first of all, there is an organization called National Equity Project. NEP held a youth symposium in early August, and we had the opportunity to send several of our students. And in late August, I would say, a group of administrators and myself had the opportunity to hear directly from the students who attended, and we also got to hear their demands of our school district. And as you look at the themes from their list of demands, we see that many of the items that our students are calling for are the items that I also heard from our staff and also from our families via the surveys and items that I heard during my empathy interviews that I conducted. Our students want to be seen and valued. They're asking the district for representation in terms of the diversity of our staff and also in terms of the curricular materials and the curriculum that we are teaching. Our students would like to feel safe, not just from a physical standpoint, but also in an emotional standpoint. They want to be able to be who they are, not having to lose themselves in order to fit into a certain category. Our students want their voices to be heard. For real, they want their voices to be heard. They would like us to not just hear what they're saying, but how we're using their feedback and input to make changes. And then finally, our students are very interested in restorative practices, giving students space to make mistakes, learn and grow. Next slide. The district is, has also been accepted to a network called BELL. BELL stands for, is an acronym that stands for Building Equitable Learning Environments. So I use the Bells Networks Framework to help me organize the feedback that I gather. And also, it helped me to prioritize the commitments. And also it helped me to prioritize the commitments we would address in our S Y twenty two school year twenty one. Twenty two action plan. The bell network will be working with Princeton Public Schools. But along with other districts policymakers, grant makers and school support organizations. To innovate and implement equitable learning environments that are grounded in research and the science of learning and development. And the network believes that every district can create an equitable education system where everyone thrives and. Next slide. So this is the bell framework and the bell framework provides a shared understanding of what we're all working towards. In our respective areas for creating inclusive, equitable learning environments. Next slide. So the four commitments that I'm planning to present to the board tonight in our action plan. For the school year were presented to the administrative team in August. And the admin team during our retreat provided input and they drafted version one point O of our S Y twenty two. Action plan and I then finalize the draft using their input. Next slide. That final draft or that action plan and the four commitments was then shared with the full staff. Around September sixteenth in what is called a thought exchange and a thought exchange is an online tool. Where individuals can. Share thoughts, perspectives or questions. Next slide. We had a total of a hundred and six of our staff members who participated in the thought exchange and it was only open for four days. They exchanged a hundred and eight thoughts and they they provided over a thousand ratings on those thoughts. Next slide. So the oh, that's interesting. So that should be. So that you can't see it, but you can see like who on the staff participated. Next slide. Okay, so here are the top ranked thoughts. And hopefully you could see it, but these top ranked thoughts were incorporated into the draft presented to. That will be presented this evening to the board. So one of the top ranked ranked thoughts was better communication. Between Valley Road, which is the administrative building, our supervisors, building administrators and the teachers. Another top rank thought that was exchanged was me, the new superintendent. Being out in the trenches so that I could see really what's going on. And the third top ranked thought that was exchanged was an appreciation for seeing well being as a key component. And these action plans. So next slide. So finally, I'm sorry to take so long, but I just wanted to give you a little bit of background as to how I came up with. What we are presenting to you this evening. So what is the district's? Action plan for the upcoming school year. And again, it's around four commitments. So commitment number one, next slide. Commitment area number one in our action plan is supporting the district and working towards, working towards. Seeing professional learning as less of a thing that we do and more of a culture of who we are. That every day, every educator has job embedded opportunities to innovate and refine their practices. So that's what we're working towards. So for this year, next slide. This is just some of the data that helped us get there. Next slide.
Think there's an X out in that one too.
Oh, that's what it is. You're okay. Got it. Yeah. If you see the X out, you could see it. Yeah, thank you. No problem. Professional learning opportunities in the district definitely are in place, but delivering those opportunities and sustain. Job embedded team based formats is really important. To our stakeholders and we also saw that in the special ed review. As well as the equity audit that the district performed several years ago. So when P D isn't. Delivered in that manner, the research does show that it's not quite as effective. As job embedded everyday learning opportunities for our staff that student centered. Thus, we might see less evidence of staff putting their learning into practice. And since one of the district's goals is to inspire innovation and experimentation in both teaching and learning. This commitment establishing professional processes and structures. To foster a culture of individual and collective learning, we feel is essential. So this year. Our actions are going to be focused on helping each leader, both our school and our departmental leaders. Develop action plans for their schools and their departments. And also supporting every educator with aligning their individual goals. With the goals of their schools or their departments. Next slide. This action is intended to support our school and our department leaders. As well as the individual educators with creating action plans and goals. That align with the district's commitment and action plan, helping us therefore to align every school. And every department and every educator in a unified process. And again, we know that we we're, you know, attempting, keep, you can go on, Matt. We know that we're attempting to get to the job embedded every day for every educator. But for this year, we're really going to be focusing on supporting our leaders with development of their school or department. Goals. So this is an example of. The big picture to help our school leaders as an example, develop their goals. You could see the student targets. That they will be asked to develop for their school, their school plans. And you could also see. The four district level commitments. That they will be selecting one or maybe more to focus on. As well as some of the potential aligned strategies. Okay, next slide. So those department and school goals going along with our evaluation process. Are due, Mr. Volby helped me by the end of October, I think October thirty first. Alright, so our second priority commitment is related to providing high quality educational experiences for all students. Which was definitely a value expressed in both the family surveys last spring and I also heard it several times. In the empathy interviews conducted upon my entry. Next slide. Specifically, I heard this call again for. Students access to deeper learning experiences, but for all students, not just some. One person said, and I'm quoting, if we're going to go after the biggest impact. I choose cultivating and I'm highlighting this word inclusive classrooms. If we achieve this, some of the other things will fall into place. Next slide. So again, if the district goal is to promote equity and access. Then for the twenty one twenty two school year. We feel that our action plan at the district level must include focusing on curriculum revision work. Expanding how we assess students and developing both on the academic as well as the behavioral side. A multi tiered systems of support. Specifically for the development of a multi tiered systems of support. I've seen that being developed in the last two districts that I've been a superintendent. It's not something that could be done overnight. So this year. Especially considering that we are still in a pandemic, we're going to be focusing more so on the development of. I guess in the business world, you might call it standard operating of procedures as an educator. I just call it bringing together a team where we're looking at. What criteria we want to put in place that we are developing a menu of resources for each of the tiers. And we're also developing a communication and an implementation plan as to how we can make. M T S S more so consistently a reality across the district. Next slide. The third commitment in the action plan at the district level is establishing opportunities to foster positive relationships. And environments where all of our learners, students and adults feel a sense of belonging. Next slide. Many of those that I spoke with commented on this need, including establishing structures and programs. To foster and build strong relationships for both our students and the adults working in the district. Next slide. So district commitment number three aligns with the district goal, promote culture of care, connectedness. And communication and uses the support of our school leaders to promote collaboration and professional growth. In the areas of restorative and community building practices in their schools via. Modeling community building strategies to their staff. Providing support and feedback to their staff to encourage their use of practices in their classrooms. And additionally, more so based on the staff input from the thought exchange. I've also added a few items and they are to create additional touch points for myself with the staff. Such as an establishment of a superintendent's advisory panel. Superintendent's routine visits to our schools. And we're looking at ways that we can provide an educator newsletter from the superintendent's office or Valley Road. All of those additional actions were included in this version of our action plan. To improve upon the communication between Valley Road, our building administrators and our teachers. Next slide. And finally, commitment number four is related to the district's use of data. So that we can make continual improvements to the services that we deliver to students and to our staff. Next slide. This priority area is intended to help improve delivery of services for students and the schools that we serve. You could see a few of, I just took a few of the quotes from the interviews that I. Collected during my empathy interviews. Next slide. So district commitment number four aligns to the district goal, every child known. Promoting relationships and instruction that recognizes, I did tweak this a little bit, I'm sorry. That recognizes the potential, the passions and the readiness level and learning styles of every student. By strengthening the capacity of schools and district leaders to establish data systems. We can help our leaders and our staff inform their support of the students that we serve. And additionally, as pointed out in the thought exchange from concerns raised by the staff. We also want to support our leaders with the use of data systems. To improve our service delivery in the areas of our facilities and technology services. Next slide. Alright, so I would like to conclude the presentation of the district's. School year twenty one twenty two action plan for the achievement of the district's goals. I would like to make one final note though, before opening the floor to questions from the board. In our action plan, the commitments are based on a framework for building equitable learning environments. Where all students can be successful and thrive by expanding our ideals of measuring student success. We intend to center our actions based upon listening to our students. And observing our students, measuring the learning experiences of our students will help us meaningfully. Improve their learning outcomes. The measurements or vital signs of success will be finalized by the end of October. And those measurements will be based upon feedback from the schools and our departmental action plans. I think one other thought that I just want to say, because I believe this was one of the questions I saw from the board. The focus of these goals around student learning. Is based on the, I guess, the theory of action. That the 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 student learning is really at the core of this action plan. And that what we are attempting to do is through our organizational structure. Really help to improve the adult practices, the educator practices from the superintendent on down. So that we can support our students. There are other. Goals and strategies and things of that nature in terms of the running of our business that we call the school district. But we do not typically have that in the district action plan by which. A lot of the educators are evaluated for performance. So that's the reason why you may not see other activities outlined in this district action plan. So. Matt, you can take down the presentation. I am so sorry for such a long winded. Report, but I wanted you to get a sense of how, what process was used to develop those four commitments. I also just want to point out that. We, I, the administrators in the retreat probably gave. For each commitment, two to three pages of actions that we could do. And I really narrowed it down and the reason for that is I am recognizing that our school leaders. And a lot of us at Valley Road are supporting our school leaders. And during a pandemic and I want to make sure that the. The actions that are outlined are are commitments that we're making to the community and to the board. So that the community and the board can hold all of us accountable. But they really do tie into where we want to see movement. Toward those aspirational goals. So. I will open the floor up to questions from the board. Betsy.
I think it's Susan actually, but I'm gonna.
Okay, I always know that Betsy, sorry, Betsy.
I'm not usually the first question person. So my question is like many of these goals obviously are longer term goals, but. How do you report back to us, you know, in the short term to how progress is going and? How does that look to both the board and the community?
Right. So the 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 goals are, I because of where we are with this. I know that the strategic plan is up for renewal, but I did go back to the strategic plan and the the goals really are from the. The strat plan. There probably was one goal that was really connected to every student known. But I just really went with four out of the five. The process that I typically use is probably. At least twice a year, if not three times a year, is providing. The board and the forum like this, an update on where we are with the district level commitments. But we we have been. Having conversations around like how every department and how every school can share out what their goals will be. And like their cadence of providing updates to their community. That might be through P T O meetings, that might be through the principal's newsletters. And I also think in Elizabeth Collier and I have been talking about. Some form of district newsletter where we could use that as a vehicle to share. Quick updates around what our progress is and really commending. The support that we're giving across the district in moving in the same. the support that we're giving across the district in moving in the same directions along those four, those four commitments. Betsy?
Thank you. Mine's just a comment. Dr. Kelly, we knew when we hired you that you'd be student-centered and equity-focused and data-driven. And then your very first presentation of goals, I feel like we got all three. So thank you so much. I also appreciate the focus on consistent staff support as well. So I just, I'm eager to, to see, you know, progress along these goals throughout the year. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Peter, hi, Peter.
Hi, thanks. I, you know, Betsy stole some of my thunder. I think I was gonna make similar comments. I thank you very much for the, the, all of those pieces, particularly the data-focused and evidence-based decision-making. You know, I, I think it's really important that we have, take data on these things and see how are we succeeding. So I, I appreciate that. My question to you is, when you come back before us, as you said, we'll do this, I don't know, quarterly, whatever it may be, let's say in the May or June meeting, what do you expect, kind of broad strokes, what do you expect to be different about the schools? Like what will, if you had these focus groups again, what will hopefully students, administrators, teachers, parents be saying changed?
I certainly hope one of the things that would change is around communications, that people feel that there is a cadence of sharing information between. And that, that is a comment honestly that you hear frequently regardless of what district. But I, I definitely hope that that would be a change. I hope that for our students in particular, that they will feel that their voices have been heard and that they have seen some changes based upon the input that they provided. I hope that our staff feels that their feedback is incorporated into the, the work. So I, I, I think from the standpoint of, you know, again, I go back to like one of my favorite authors, what Shane Sephir talks about is that listening is an equity lever. So I, I hope that people will feel as if we have, that we have listened. Certainly, there will be some, you know, metrics that are really important for us to look at. I know chronic absenteeism would, would be one of those. So I, I certainly hope that as we are really listening to students' voices and centering the work that we're doing with the lens of wanting all students to thrive and belong, that we will see changes with the percentage of our students that are considered chronically absent from school. So I, I think I will be better prepared to answer your question after I, you know, combine all of the, the metrics in terms of some other things that I would want to see in June.
Great, thank you so much.
Dan?
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. That was very good. A lot of substance there. My question is, is there an opportunity to accelerate some of the areas like the multi-tiered intervention system? You know, my concern is when kids fall behind, they have difficulty catching up. To the extent we have those supports in place sooner rather than later, it would really help a lot of our kids.
That is a really great question. So one of the reasons I've been, and I know it probably sounds really corny and I'm not trying to brown nose with the community or the district, that I've been using a theme building on the best is that I, I, I believe that some of the, that there, there are interventions that are being provided in some ways. So I don't, you know, by saying that one of our actions is to develop the multi-tiered system of support, I don't want in any way for to discount the work that's already happening in the district. So we do have, and Bob helped me, AIS staff members. We do have staff members who are looking at how students are performing and providing them with the additional supports. What the multi-tiered system of support would do for a district is provide specific criteria for what, what are the things that we will want to see in all classrooms? Again, to make all classrooms universally designed for helping all learners with the content. And a multi-tiered system of support would further define, you know, for some learners, what additional supports at, you know, they would need. And then for a tiny percentage of learners, what is like the top tier of support? We want to provide that for students that need additional supports, but your MTSS should also really address students that might need acceleration enrichment support. So it's, it looks more like a diamond these days, but you are providing that for not just the academics, but also the, the behavior. And I, and I do think that that foundational, like going slow and it might feel like you are not really accomplishing much, you really are helping and supporting the district to go fast later on.
Thank you.
Yes, Dr. Kelly, thank you. Really informative and, and I love that you're listening, you know, to so many different groups. And I'm always really big with the student voice. And I hope that we take from today from Ned and Chris that we're able to tell them, because Chris is right, the students really should also be hearing who has COVID and yeah. And so I love that this hopefully will be our first time of saying, you're right, students. We hear you. So I, I do, I appreciate you listening to all the different groups because our community is made up of so many. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Daphna?
Thank you. Dr. Kelly, I just want to say thank you. Please don't ever apologize for talking about how we're gonna make our district more inclusive and help more kids succeed. You could go on all night. It's been a long time since we've had conversations like, conversations like this. So thank you. Really appreciate it.
Oh, thank you.
That's it. I don't have any questions. I know.
Sorry, I didn't mean to sound shocked, but
It's okay.
That's your hand up.
I raised my hand. I can never remember how to put my hand up because I'm usually moderating. So I can never find it. But I just wanted to also thank you. I really appreciate that you went back to our strategic plan of five years, which we're at the end of, and, and kind of brought back those very basic goals that we've had as a district for the last five years, talking about every child known and, and then bringing it to a new level where you say, here's what we've got and how are we gonna improve that? And what are our people saying? What do people really need? And I, and, and it's also all aligned in one direction. And I'll thank my colleague, Michelle Tuck-Ponder, for her emphasis on alignment. I think that made a big impression on me when I was first on the board about we need to align this district at every level. So so exactly, people aren't thinking that things are just coming from Valley Road down high and nobody, nobody explains it or nobody listens. And, and that's so important. So I, I thank you for that. And I just wanted to ask a practical question. Where can people find those slides? And can, you know, we spent some more time because there was so much good stuff there that I would like to really think about.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I can provide the slides to Elizabeth. Elizabeth is my go-to person for everyone. Elizabeth Collier, who's the district's public information officer and all things like when Carol doesn't know the answer to something. So I, I can work with Elizabeth for us to get it on, to get it somewhere. She's saying yes. And I am doing a town hall. I think it's tentatively being planned for the middle of October. I think it's Octo- tentatively October nineteenth from six to seven. And the thought was to share ahead of time, maybe even this video from the presentation and for individuals to be able to, to share with us their questions about the action plan, but about anything in that I would be available to answer those questions. So we will have that opportunity as well.
Thank you.
Michelle is her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Michelle.
Oh, no problem. Dr. Kelly, I just want to thank you for your building an infrastructure. Because one of the things that, that I'm really big on is you can't build a house if you don't have a solid foundation and you don't have a solid framework. And so what, what I've seen here tonight is, you know, we, we all very much passionately want to do something for the kids, but the, the most important thing is to build a, a structure that can support all of our kids across the board for the long haul. And I think that you, what you've put together is a great, great beginning. So thank you for that.
Thank you. And again, a lot of input. So a lot of input from our admin team. I appreciate the staff, you know, on their own time, like reading through the materials and exchanging the thoughts. So I, I really, and I appreciate the board's support with just allowing us to participate in the Bill of Framework, the network rather. So it's, it definitely is, is a journey.
Great. Can I ask one just quick follow-up to, and to think about the board and the board goals and how we support you through board goals? And maybe that ties into the running of the business and the idea of, you know, preparing for enrollment increases in our facilities and also our financial stewardship. So how do you see that working in terms of goals and, and our kind of checking in with each other and having, you know, things to hold each other accountable for?
Yeah, so I, yes, I think thinking in terms of some of the more the, the business goals. But I also think for each of the commitments, there are certain things that we would need the board's support. So as an example, the job embedded every day, you know, professional learning. The utopia for that would look like opportunities for staff members who teach the same content or a grade level to be able to have professional learning time together. So, you know, that requires a certain master schedule, you know, for the, the, the principal, which requires perhaps certain level of staffing to be able to, if I were, if I were an elementary principal, to be able to, to, to do that. As we're talking about like the whole inclusive classrooms, deeper learning, the universal like design for learning. If I have partner teachers, like being able to have enough teachers where they can be partner teachers, where they can come together and plan. So I, I think, you know, the policy resources, looking through that lens as you are like looking at the, the, not just the plan for this year, but thinking about the, the, the commitments that are probably more of a priority based on what we're hearing from the community.
So we would have a conversation about that. I know this is our first year doing it. So I just want to kind of talk about how we think about that. Is that a conversation that we would then have maybe next month at one of our meetings with you? When, when you've got your more clarity after your clarity on your vital signs or when, when?
So, you know, I, I'm just gonna be perfectly honest with you. My last superintendency for six years, we never really, they never really got to goal-setting. So it has been, when I was in Branchburg, more of like a board retreat, a special meeting. So it could be during a board meeting. I know that there were one regular meeting a month, but you could use like maybe one of the meetings as like that would be the only topic perhaps? I don't know. That would be my suggestion.
We can talk more about that. That, that, we'll, we're gonna learn this as we go and we wanna make sure we're supporting you as you build out these structures. And the idea of the business side too, we can talk separately about how we do that because we're accustomed to kind of for the community saying, you know, we, we have certain goals with respect to financial stewardship or kind of in this community, we have to plan for growth. And that's something that's kind of extraordinary in, in, in the next couple of years. So
That is extraordinary because most suburban communities are not growing. So that's a great problem to have.
It is, it is. Thank you. Are there any other questions? If there's no further questions, that takes us to our first, first public forum. And I would just say that the public is invited to talk to us on any topic. We ask that this, we, we intend to keep this to fifteen minutes if possible. Otherwise, we may have a motion to extend if we need extra time. We ask people to keep it to three minutes and that you state your name and your address. And we mentioned that under New Jersey law, we can't discuss personnel matters and we can't respond to comments made by members of the public. That's a legal requirement. And we also note that our employees retain all rights regarding defamation and slander according to laws of New Jersey. And we can't entertain those kind of comments. And we are not liable for comments that are made by the public. And we ask that people choose their comments to, to consider being respectful and non-disamatory and maintain a level of decorum appropriate for a meeting of a public body. So we just wanted to, to put that out there. We're trying to get more organized in how we interact and, and clear about the guidelines. And so we thank you all, if you're going to make comments for your consideration of everyone else that is here in the meeting tonight. So thank you.
Sorry if I didn't get that right.
You're muted?
Okay, Woo. Bonnie. Bonnie Fune Cielo.
I'm sorry if I accidentally raised my hand. I don't have a comment. I'm sorry about
Sorry, I didn't mean to mute you while you were talking. I just, the music, have a good night. Emily Barrett?
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, Emily Barrett, two thirteen, Stewart Road East. So I'm sharing my comments as the mother of three children in the school district, as well as an associate professor of epidemiology. That's Rutgers School of Public Health. My expertise is on environmental exposures and stressors in relation to children's health. And during the pandemic, I've also pivoted to work on COVID nineteen. So I want to first share my personal experience as a mother, which is that like many other families during remote schooling, we experienced major mental health issues in our household. And when we sought professional help for our child's acute mental health crisis, we found that mental health issues were so pervasive among children in our district that it took us months to find a psychologist who could add a new client. But I also want to share my perspective as a scientist interested in children's well-being. So over the last year, my research group has been studying over two thousand eight-year-olds around the country. These are children we have been following since before they were born and they're generally happy and healthy. And in interviews we conducted with them during the pandemic, depending on their location in the US, thirty to fifty-five percent had symptoms of clinical anxiety. Ten to thirty-three percent showed signs of depression. And most stunning was the unprecedented number of children reporting suicidal ideations at age eight. It was roughly twenty-five percent of respondents. And that's a sobering statistic that I think should worry us all. Children were suffering during isolation all across the US and in Princeton. And for these reasons, I'm really thrilled that the district is so committed to having our children back at school in person. None of us want to see our kids go back to remote learning and social isolation. So why I want to speak today, why I feel compelled to, is to reinforce the gravity of the choices that we're making regarding COVID nineteen precautions. What we choose to do today as a district in terms of simple things like standardizing policies around outdoor meals or retune COVID nineteen surveillance, which is standard practice in many places, has major ramifications for our ability to keep our students at school in person. As we see isolated cases crop up, which is already happening, we need to ensure that they don't have the chance to spread. It's not just about fear of a severe infection and death, which are rare but real concerns. But we're also trying to prevent scenarios in which an isolated case turns into dozens of students who shared a class or lunchroom together and now have to quarantine. And we're already and now have to quarantine. And we're already seeing shutdowns in surrounding districts pop up. Princeton is no different if we aren't vigilant. I want our children to be able to continue to see friends at school, to participate safely in clubs and sports. That social interaction is so vital to their well being. And so although we're all bristling at continued restrictions posed by this pandemic, we're not yet out of the woods and larger quarantines are on the horizon if we let down our guard. So I want to thank the board for listening. I know that everyone on this call has the same ultimate end goal, which is to keep our kids happy and healthy through this stressful period. And I wanted to let you know that we appreciate your partnership in these efforts to keep our kids safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Aviva Geiger Schwartz.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, Aviva Geiger Schwartz, seventy four Allison Road. I am the mother to two students at Johnson Park. I have a master's in public health, have served as a public health epidemiologist at the New York City Department of Health in the past and currently a research data analyst at the Boston University School of Public Health. Also here to talk about COVID. Based on data submitted to the FDA just today by Pfizer, Bio and Tech, we can expect emergency use authorization of a COVID nineteen vaccine for children five to eleven years old in the coming weeks. This should fill a major remaining gap in vaccine eligibility for the majority of schoolchildren in our district. My hope as a mother to two kids in this age range is that I'll be able to have my own children vaccinated fully before the winter break. I call on the district to begin planning now, right now, not weeks from now, for how they will communicate with parents and work in partnership with health authorities in order to ensure swift and equitable uptake of this critical vaccine. In the meantime, we have to get through one more fall. Outbreaks in neighboring districts are already resulting in school closures. This is happening in communities just like ours. We need to continue making adjustments to ensure widespread quarantine, school closures, and more unnecessary learning loss doesn't happen for our children again. Outdoor snacks and lunches for all children every day must be implemented and with greater urgency. This measure has been called for by our town health officer, Jeff Grosser, and has received support from Superintendent Kelly and the various school principals, for which I thank them. Across the schools, however, we're seeing inconsistent implementation and infrequent communication with parents around the issue of outdoor lunches. I call on our incredible community of teachers, parents, students, and administrators to work together, put on our problem solver hats, and make it happen. Let's continue to make creative, science informed decisions and get our children safely through these critical next few months. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dylan Robbins.
Hello, good evening. I just wanted to give a shout out first and foremost to Christian and to Ned Erickson for your comments, thoughtful, very well put together. And they also echo many concerns of your parents and other parents in the district as we dialogue with the with the board and also administrations in order to try to increase safety measures to assure that kids like you, kids like our own as well, can stay in school in person where they need to be, where they're happier, and where they will do better both academically, socially, and emotionally. That is what we're here for, and that's what we're here to talk about. According to Dr. Michael Osterholm of the University of Minnesota Center for Infections, Disease Research and Policy, the most impactful mitigation measures in decreasing order begin with vaccination, followed by ventilation, then testing, and finally masking. And I would like to speak a little bit about ventilation. Ventilation is optimal outdoors, which is why we're pushing for consistent lunches and snacks outdoors, not just for elementary school kids and middle school kids, but also for high school kids. There needs to be a push to have them outdoors as much as possible. A case in point, the Friends School last year had all meals outdoors all year long, every day, and didn't have a single case. I think PPS can do the same thing. Yeah. And in terms of ventilation in the school, there's still some missing information, particularly about the quality of air replacement in the cafeterias, the band halls, the auditoriums, the black box theater, for example, at Riverside, the art room, and other rooms that are used for indoor unmasked activities and lunches. That information should ideally be provided publicly to parents. So we have a clearer sense of the safety of those rooms. As well, testing should be provided, monitoring these spaces to see if the equipment is actually performing at the level that is being reported. Yeah, and that is a really important feature there. So thank you. That's the end of my comments. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. I see no other questions at this time.
If there are no further questions, then we will continue. Next item is the harassment, intimidation, and bullying report period. I think that's just an information item. And then we have our board committee highlights. First would be Equity Committee.
Hey, I will present that tonight on behalf of my co-chair as well, Debbie DeBby Bronfeld. The Equity Committee met Monday, September thirteenth at seven P M. in a public committee meeting on Zoom. Lisa Vehay and David Peak from the Shaker Heights, Ohio School District attended at the invitation of Dr. Kelly. The Shaker Heights Schools had recently developed an equities task force, and Lisa and David shared the process, their outcomes, and what they learned along the way. Their goal was not just to put policies in place, but to create a set of skills and beliefs that are important to everyone. So their equity task force was charged with exploring assets and challenges of embracing equity in their district. And in order to do so, they examined it top to bottom. This work was importantly, it's important to note, was done as part of the district's strategic planning. So I'll share with you their four top takeaways. Equity does not mean equal as far as defining equity based on needs. The importance of targeted universalism. If you raise one group, you raise them all. Equity benefits all of us, and it also changes how off sometimes how money is spent as well as other resources in the district. So the Shaker Heights said now that they have a strong policy, they're still looking to develop an educational equity tool. So we're grateful for the time they took with us to share a successful example of a collaborative process that included board members, staff members, students, and community members. We look forward as a committee to discussing the next steps for our committee with Dr. Kelly and Ms. Tidwell. The next meeting of the Equity Committee is open to the public. It'll be Monday, October eleventh at seven P M. The agenda will be posted on the district website calendar, and we welcome and encourage all to attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy. Are there any questions? Seeing none, then we're on to operations.
I could start and then I'll let Brian fill in when I left out. But we met on September twenty second at eight A M. And just so the public knows, our next meeting will be October twentieth, also at eight A M. We were presented by Matt a summary of the referendum projects in much more detail than he presented here. Then we discussed other projects going on in the district like concerning sustainability, like the building controls, the L E D lights, additional eight racks that are being done, and additional projects that are being done to update our district, like the nadatorium at the Princeton Middle School. We also discussed the possibility of looking at the detention basins that he showed us to discuss if there should be an analysis to have some plantings there as we've gotten conflicting reports on that issue. We then discussed COVID issues, some of the points that were just made by the public. And we discussed HEPA filters and their possibility of being deployed more fully in the schools. The lunch issues were also brought up, and it was clearly noted that even after the pandemic, providing ways for students and teachers to eat outside even going forward is something that might be a desirable goal for our district. And then I'll turn over to Brian. If you'd like to add anything.
Thanks, Susan. I think you covered everything, but I I will add two, two last things that we talked about were the challenges posed by the intersection at Rosedale Road in Johnson Park and the ongoing efforts to work with the town and the county. It's a county road to work with both the town and the county to make that a safer crossing for schoolchildren and pedestrians and bicyclists. And we also talked about beginning the process of, as hard as it may be to to believe, talking about the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three budget. And as we move a little deeper into the fall, those conversations will begin. So we'll have a few months before we get to the public presentation in February.
Thank you. Are there any customs for the operations committee? If there's none, then that takes us to Personnel. Michelle Tuckponder.
Thank you. Our most recent Personnel Committee meeting was held on September second, twenty twenty one. We talked about a number of items which most are confidential, our labor negotiations, and also some sidebars with P R E A, which will be are going to be considered by the board this evening on this evening's agenda. We talked about our hiring processes across, well, specifically for a position, but also just across the board, what our hiring processes are. We had some updates on ongoing searches that are occurring right now. We also addressed vaccinations and the governor's executive order and how we would implement on that executive order around vaccination and unvaccinated staff. We talked about symptom screening for COVID amongst staff and also other topics that I'm not at liberty to share with you at this time. Our next meeting will be on Thursday, October seventh, and again, it is close to the public. Are there any questions? Thank you.
There are none. Thank you, Michelle. That takes us to Policy. Jean Durbin.
Thanks. Policy met on September seventeenth at seven thirty in the morning. We had a presentation from Strauss S. May, who will be our new policy provider. They expect to have a draft new policy manual for us by the end of October to the administration, and we will review it together. And the next meeting is October fifteenth, twenty twenty one, seven thirty A M., open to the public. Beth, did I miss anything?
I think that's good. Thank you. And we will be sharing with the board some, we asked some more specific questions about the process, and I think we'll just share those with the board. We got answers from Strauss S. May that were quite quite helpful on our policies and regulations going forward. Student Achievement, Daphna Kendall.
Thank you. The Student Achievement Committee met last Friday, September twenty fourth. Virgil Abaha advised the Committee of New Graduation Requirements that were issued by the state of New Jersey. Students who the class of in the classes of twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, and twenty twenty five will take the New Jersey graduation proficiency assessment in grade eleven. The assessment will be aligned to New Jersey learning standards for grade ten E L A and for Algebra one and geometry. If after completing the graduation proficiency assessment, a student does not demonstrate proficiency, they have other options as they do now, including taking the test again or doing a portfolio assignment. Appeal. The remainder of the meeting was spent discussing an item that's on the agenda for the board approval tonight, which is called Link, Link It. Linked, Link It will be used by the district to track the progress of students. It will provide secure permissions based access to academic data, which will help inform lesson planning. Differentiation and grouping it will provide support for teachers, grade and department level collaboration, and it will enable teachers to plan, track, and monitor interventions and efforts in relation to equity. The next meeting will be held on Friday, October fifteenth at nine thirty virtually. The public is welcome and encouraged to attend.
Thank you, Daphna. Any questions? If not, then that is, I think we have nothing for negotiations, correct? So we'll just move on.
That's correct.
Thank you. And we will now go through the items on the agenda that are going to be covered by the consent vote that we will do at the end. So I will just read the titles, and then if people have comments or questions, they can stop me. We are on M one appointments. M two transfers, reassignments. M three resignations. M four retirements. And we see you there, Dr. Ginsberg. Yeah, Daphna.
Oh, I just wanted to, you know, note that the guidance assistant is retiring, and I just wanted to wish her all the best. Mrs. Conway.
Thank you. Item M five, COVID sidebars. M six, six-period coverages. M seven, leaves of absence. M eight, other personnel items. M nine, athletics. M ten, substitutes. M eleven, non-athletic E P E S.
Yeah, I just want to ask about that or comment. I know that the middle school ones were looked at. And I just want to make sure that just because stuff is listed, I want to make sure that they are happening. That we're, you know, we're working with the kids and the staff is all there. And I just want to make sure that everything listed is the ones that are happening. Because we get stuck if we approve this. We pay it, but I just want to make sure they're all, because I was confused. I think, Mike, you said only the middle school was looked at.
Sure. And I can, I can clarify that if it was unclear. My apologies for that. By the P R E A contract, there's authority built in there that we can look at what is being done and if it is being appropriately compensated. There's a scale in there if somebody's working ten hours versus if they're working fifty hours. So what I did with union leadership, who have been great partners with me the entire summer, I can't give them enough credit, is we looked at the work specifically this time for the middle school and was budget neutral. And we said, hey, if this person is working more and this person is working less, we're going to allocate the funds over here. So we aligned the middle school perfectly with the administration as well as union leadership. We were only able to do the reallocation for the middle school, and we will look to do the high school and elementary school in future years, perhaps even later as we go on to this year. So when I say it was looked at, it was just the middle school was looked at for the reallocation of funds. As far as the work being done at the elementary and the high school, anything that a principal put on there, yes, there is the expectation that absolutely a hundred percent work is being done for that stipend.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you for the question, Debbie. Then we are, item twelve is the Canvas Instructional Technology Mentors. Thirteen is aid stipends. Fourteen is curriculum instruction. Fifteen, Student Services Work. And one, Educational Consulting. And two, Purchase of Advance Assessment. And then O one, Educational Placement of Students. O two, Educational Placement. Three, Professional Consulting. Four, Consulting. Five is the I D E A Funds. Six is tuition of children and students of staff. And then we are on to F, P one, Financial Reports. P two, Joint Transportation Agreement. P three, Construction Management Service, New Roads. P four, Fire Evacuation Drills. P five, Acceptance of Donation, Hamilton Athletic Club. I will note there that we have been donated new starting blocks for the highs for the pool. We thank, thank you very much, Hamilton Athletic Aquatic Club. That's a nice improvement for our nadatorium. It'll be nice when we open that back up.
Can I just add that was on the list for the twenty eighteen referendum, and like many sports items, it was removed. So it's a needed improvement. So again, I echo your thanks.
Thank you. P six, Purchase of Equipment, Teacher Laptops. And this is part of continuation of the one-to-one initiative from last summer, if I'm correct. Mr. Bolden.
Not necessarily related to the one-to-one, but part of the overall technology budget that we analyzed in depth to adjust the feasibility of one-to-one. So.
Thank you. P seven, Change Orders. J P H vac. P eight, Sustainability Consulting Services, Daniel of Princeton.
It's action.
Yeah, that's an action item. Good. Can we explain that one a little bit just quickly? Mr. Bolden, that's like, that's kind of an exciting collaboration that we're doing with a community group.
A preliminary venture. A preliminary venture with a local organization that's done great work on sustainability. So we are, you know, like I said, the inaugural, you know, trial year, they're going to help us with all sorts of areas surrounding sustainability. We've started to make some progress on the, you know, energy-related areas, but they are willing to help us and move us forward. So with the, with that, it's an action item because one of our board members is a board member of that organization.
Thank you. Very excited to have that kind of capacity-building collaboration with a community partner. It's the kind of thing that I know that many in the community have asked us to try to do, and I think it's a great step, and it will help us look at the solar readiness of our roofs and a number of other really important things that only so many, we have only so many people in the administration, and to have expanded capacity is really wonderful. Could I have a motion for this one? Peter Katz and the second, Jean Durbin. So could we have a vote to approve these sustainable consulting services with Sustainable Princeton?
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Dan Dart?
Yes.
Betsy Baglio?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
abstain.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder?
You're on mute.
I'm going to abstain.
Peter Katz?
Yes.
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Jean Durbin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Then we will resume with the consent items. We're on to travel and registration. And then we're down to the vote on consent. Could I have a motion for the consent vote, please? Daphna Kendall, second, Betsy Baglio, any discussion? If none, could we have a vote on the consent, please?
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Dan Dart?
Yes.
Betsy Baglio?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder?
Yes.
Peter Katz?
Yes.
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Jean Durbin?
Yes.
Consent agenda passes.
Thank you very much. That takes us to public, our second public comment on any topic. And again, I, I don't need to repeat myself. I, basically, three minutes, we try to keep it to fifteen. Please state your name and address. Please remember the level of decorum and the issues about defamation and the other legal things we need to say, and we welcome hearing from the public.
I don't see any comments out there.
Okay. That brings us to then the closing comments. And I will just, I guess, echo my fellow board members' thanks to Dr. Kelly for a very informative presentation tonight. It's really a pleasure to be embarking on this new way of organizing our, our actions and trying to be aligned and collaborative towards our goals. It's very satisfying to even after two months with you to see this very detailed, thoughtful approach, and I really look forward to seeing where this, this takes us. Does anyone else want to have anything to say? We appreciate the update on the referendum and all the other information presented tonight, and we appreciate hearing from the public, and we thank everyone who came out. And we remind you that our next meeting again is October twelfth. And you're also welcome to come to the committees that are open, and they are posted on the district calendar. And if for some reason you can't find a Zoom, you can always email our communications people or one of us, and we generally can help secure that. We're all doing our best in a time where there's a lot of things going on. And so we thank everyone for attending tonight. Could I have a motion to dismiss or to adjourn? Ms. Cantor and second, Betsy Baglio, all those in favor? Motion passed. Thank you very much, everyone. Good night.
Night.
Good night, everyone.